Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Vito.
Present.
Counselor Lopez.
Present.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Bishop.
Present.
Counselor Tejada. Counselor Arizona. Counselor Robinson.
Yeah.
Counselor Perlottanda.
Here.
Counselor Garcia. Counselor Ray Coopero.
Yeah.
Eight members present, you have a call on Madam Chairman.
Okay, at this time, I'd ask to move to recess while the Chief and the City Clerk or Assistant City Clerk introduce and swear in two police officers.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the City Council, Mr. City Manager. I've said this before, and I'd just like to say it again, I think it begs repeating. The City Council and the City Manager have been extremely supportive of the Police Department. With the swearing in that we have tonight will be up to 109 police officers, which means we have two vacancies that we're looking to fill. And I'm sure they'll be filled shortly. What we have tonight is two individuals who actually graduated from two separate police academies. One from the Reading Police Academy, I think a couple of years ago now, if my memory serves me correctly, as I was one of the instructors for Joseph Santiago. But, and then with the Transit Police Academy. So, I just wanted to say something very quickly, and I think it's somewhat timely. So, we have a group of police officers and probation officers from Baltimore with us today and over the next couple of days. They're here as guests of ROKA. ROKA is going to open a facility in Baltimore on July 2nd. I had a meeting with the folks today. And then, coincidentally, or ironically, and in a sad way, I was on my way here tonight, and many of you perhaps may have heard some of the breaking news, but sadly, there was a female police officer, a young police officer, that was killed in Baltimore today, responding to a suspicious call, suspicious motor vehicle call, and she was killed. And I think this happened somewhat in the afternoon, or early afternoon. I know they locked down the schools, and I was just talking to someone a short time ago, and the schools were locked down up until, matter of fact, about 6:30 or so. So, real sad. So, the reason why I tell the story, I mention it, we know what happened with Sergeant Sean Gannon from Yarmouth, one of our own, just a month ago, was shot and killed in the line of duty. And just basically, as a reminder, this is a very, very dangerous job. Whether you're in Yarmouth, whether you're in Baltimore, whether you're in Chelsea or Boston, it's just a very, very dangerous job, a job that we don't take lightly. But at the same time, we go out there, and I tell the officers every day, and they know this anyway, but certainly as a reminder to be diligent, to be vigilant, to be, you know, to exercise officer's safety at all times, but at the same time, to treat the community that we serve with respect and dignity. And that's a, at times, it can be a fine balance, but it's certainly a necessary part of what we do. I'm proud of the two young men that are here today that I will call up to the stage in a second. We have Danielson Gonzalez, and we also have Joe Baca Santiago. Both of the individuals in front of us, they both speak Spanish, which is huge in a city like Chelsea. As it is right now, we have 41% of our Police Department, our diversity rate is 41% in our Police Department. We have 39 officers that speak Spanish. And I've said this before, but again, I'll repeat it, that when I started the job here in 1987, we had one officer that spoke Spanish. So, we've truly come a long way. We do have a way to go as well, but I think it's significant in allowing us to fulfill our mission, to have gentlemen, young gentlemen like these, these two before us tonight, to get sworn in. Both individuals are college graduates. Danielson Gonzalez has an associate's in criminal justice from Massasoia Community College. He has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Curry College. He was a member of the Randolph Auxiliary Police for many years. Joseph Baca Santiago has a Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice from Springfield College. Joe was working for the Shirley Police Department before he joined us here in Chelsea. Chief Demora is here, former Chief Demora of Shirley, former, also the Chief in Pittsburgh, and also a longtime Lowell Police Officer, good personal friend of mine. He's here to support Joe. And again, these two officers have hit the ground running already. You've heard me say that before, but it's the truth. They've been sworn in in the City Manager's office on separate dates. They've really impressed us with what they've done so far, and I'm sure they're going to impress us much more with what they have to offer. So, at this time, I'll call the two officers up to the stage. We'll come right up here. And the City Clerk will swear you in. Yeah.
So, I'm going to have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name, please.
I, Danielson Masalas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
And come in upon me.
Upon me.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
Of the Chelsea Police Department.
Of the Chelsea Police Department.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably.
Agreeably.
To the rules and regulations.
To the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And the ordinances of the City of Chelsea.
And the ordinances of the City of Chelsea.
So, help me God.
So, help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Madam President.
Did you want to take pictures or something?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we're in recess for a couple of minutes, so they can take a couple of pictures. Meetings back to order. Next order of business is a public hearing on off-street parking requirement zoning ordinance. Before I open it to the public, I'll ask our City Solicitor to address the public and explain what the ordinance, proposed ordinance is about.
I'd like to clear up some confusion over this proposed zoning amendment. This amendment was an attempt to control residential developments and the parking reductions that they seek from the zoning board and the planning board. So, although it doesn't say this, and that was an error, the proposed amendment is to deal with the off-street parking requirements of residential developments. The counselor had approached the Law Department whereby a lot of members of residents of Chelsea are complaining that we are having these huge residential developments, reducing the parking spaces that they have to create for all these units. And then, what happens is that the number of tenants who live there and who own vehicles start parking these vehicles into the communities, onto the public ways, seeking parking permits. So, what we're trying to do is that if you come to the City's zoning board or the planning board to seek reductions in the parking requirements, that somehow, you have a lease with your tenants, that they don't seek parking permits and park on the regular public ways. This is only for those people who are seeking to change the parking requirement. This is a response to public, the residents' requests that we're building, for example, 600 units on Everett Ave, or we're building affordable housing units, and we're still saying people don't have vehicles. People have vehicles, they're parking on the way, and we have a parking crunch in the City of Chelsea. So, that's all, this was an attempt to spur debate, to spur discussion amongst our planning boards and our residents.
Thank you. For the record, no action will be taken tonight. This hearing will be pushed on to June 25th. There is a hearing tomorrow at the Planning Board, as well as a subcommittee meeting this Wednesday with respect to this topic. This is a public hearing, so anyone that wants to come and address the Council with respect to the off-street parking requirements, please state your name and address for the record, and you have four minutes.
My name is Roman Pucko. I'm a member of the Polish American Veterans Post 13 of Chelsea Incorporated. What it failed to hear is how many ordinances are unenforceable, and there's a lot of them, talk to the City Planner, John De Priest, and he'll tell you how many ordinances are unenforceable. Also, if this goes ahead, how will it be enforced? How will it be monitored? And would you like to live in the city, get an apartment, and then find out that even though you have a car, you have no off-street parking? I mean, you cannot park on the street, or you don't have off-street parking. You know, those issues have to be addressed. And if anyone wants to read Section 34, 104 J, be my guest. Good luck. And if you have any questions, again, call the City Manager. I intend to be at the meeting tomorrow to try to further understand what's going on. And while I'm up here, I'd like to invite everyone to attend the Memorial Day Services at 9:00 a.m. on Memorial Day, May 28th, in front of City Hall. If it rains, they'll have the services here, and bring as many people as you can to attend that event. And finally, I'd like to thank our City Manager and Counselor Roy, my name is Roy Tooh, for helping us decorate the stream of flags at Pulaski Monument in Bethlehem Square, opposite the police station. If you do have a chance to take a look at it, please do. But again, I'd like to thank the City Mayor and Counselor Roy for helping us decorate. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Anyone else for the public hearing on off-street parking requirements?
Good evening. My name is Aaron Wasserman. I work for the Neighborhood Developers. The address is Four Garrish Avenue. I think that most of you are familiar with the Neighborhood Developers. We're a nonprofit community development organization in Chelsea. I work as the Director of Creating More Affordable Homes in Chelsea. It's one of several programs that we offer. I'm here because I'm concerned that there is an unintended negative impact on creating more affordable homes in Chelsea if this proposal in its current form passed. For example, TND has built 195 affordable rental homes for families in Chelsea since 2006. All of these are for families who earn no more than 60% of the area median income. Our residents are very representative of the Chelsea population at large. They're families with children, they lived in Chelsea previously, they stayed in the community. None of these homes would have been built without parking relief granted by the Chelsea Zoning Board. That is a crucial part to making these affordable homes feasible. And I've enclosed in the comments I submitted to the Council's office information about how we track use of our parking as the properties operate. The use is sufficient for what we've designed. And also, MAPC has studied further parking use in multifamily buildings in Chelsea, as well as some other adjacent towns, and found that parking is sufficient. I'm also, want to point out, there could be an unintended negative effect on businesses. I realize the clerk, I'm sorry, the City Solicitor commented this was meant for commercial. So, that was in my comments earlier. If businesses want to open at a larger building, change a use, expand a building, there could be unintended consequences preventing that because of a zoning and parking review. I understand that the proposal is about maximizing on-street parking for current residents. I think that's a very important quality of life issue. I very much understand the sentiment. I hope that the Council will work with the Planning Department, the City Manager's office, the Traffic and Parking Commission, and, you know, other interested people to tailor this proposal further. I think right now, in its current form, it's going to limit creating more affordable housing in Chelsea, which, you know, I've also understood to be something important among the councilors and in the city at large. So, thank you very much, and I appreciate the time to talk.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have four minutes.
Hi, my name is Barbara Richard. I live at 7 Hooper Street. And I don't mean to point fingers, but his parking for TND, they don't park in their parking lots. They park on our streets, because it's easier for them to get out of their cars than go behind the building and park in their parking lots behind the building. So, I, as a resident, pay taxes. I don't own my home, but my boyfriend owns the home. We pay taxes, and it's like, when is this snow emergency? You can't find a place on my street to park worth a... It's like, and then we're told we have to go to the school parking lot to park our cars? That's kind of crazy. That's like three blocks away. Do you want to walk in a snowstorm, three blocks, after parking your car, and then have to grab groceries, because there's no place to park? I think what Dee is saying is definitely true. It has to be stopped. They have to stop giving away parking spots for these high-rise apartments. Like, oh, they don't own cars. Take a ride down Eastern, on Spencer Ave, okay? I've lived in Chelsea for 57 years, going on 58. I went to the Burke Complex. There was never that bad of a parking issue on Spencer Ave. As I hung down Spencer Ave, I hung at the Amory. That you can't get a parking spot on any of those side streets if your life depended on it. It's pretty sad. It is, I don't mean to be, you can't stick 20 pounds of manure in a five-pound bag. Chelsea's only 1.9 square miles. How much more do you have to dump into us? It's like, do you want just all the homeowners to like, just like, get up and leave? Because that's what's happening. And then Chelsea is going to just be one big conglomerate of multi-dwelling homes or apartments or condos. It's like, and the little guys that own their home, that's like third and fourth generation, are getting pushed out. And I think that's pretty sad. So, yes, I approve of Dee, what Councilman Denali has to say about the, they have to be accountable. If they're going to have 60 units, they have to have one point and a half, or whatever it is. Because low-income people don't own cars, that's a crock of bull. And if anybody lives, if you live in this city, you know how bad it is just to get around when the school's getting out, when the school, when people are dropping kids off at school, in any of the school areas, you can't move. And then we got all the overflow of Eastern Ave, I mean, from McCollin Highway, River Beach Parkway, all coming into Eastern, and into that, like, where the school district is.
30 more seconds. 30 more seconds.
Okay.
I have to time you.
And I just wanted to let you know that I'm all for her proposal. And I'll be in that meeting tomorrow night, speaking up for that as well. It's like, if you're going to make an apartment, you need to have that whatever, one and a half or two, whatever. It should technically be three, because not only does the mother have one, the father has one, and the kids have one. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public hearing? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Rich Cuthy from the Chelsea Chamber of Commerce, 308 Broadway. I'm here to read a letter from our Board of Directors, signed by Vice President Jovanard. Whip through it in four minutes. I'll skip the niceties at the top of the page, if that's all right. Dear Honorable Chelsea City Council, the Chelsea Chamber of Commerce wishes to express its opposition to the proposed zoning ordinance changes that the City Council has submitted. We propose that the amendment be tabled until a committee can be formed and public meetings be held, so that all parties, residents, businesses, municipal and state government affected can present their views and positions on the ordinance change. The stakeholders should be able to work towards a common goal of mitigating the parking and traffic issues. We believe that the amendments to the ordinance will cause petitioners, especially current businesses and landowners, to sue the city citing that the ordinances are illegal, too restrictive, or discriminatory, and thus costing the city money, reputation, and goodwill. The city will have to defend the lawsuit, whether or not there is any legal basis for the suit. Specific business concerns are as follows. Current and future owners will not be able to redevelop parcels and buildings in a manner that is cost-effective for the current market. Future or expanding businesses will not be able or want to start or continue their businesses in Chelsea because parking is too restrictive. Banks, lenders, and investors will not loan money at a competitive rate due to the riskiness of the project. In fact, they might not even lend at all. With regard to residential situations, the questions are too numerous to contemplate at present. Just a few to start. Are there a number of rental or condo units that trigger the denial of resident parking permits? Are three or six family houses exempt? While the Chamber and Business Community understands that tenants and owners may not pay for the parking spot provided for them, the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance is too vague. Specific municipal concerns are as follows. The city's credit rating will be downgraded, thus increasing the city's borrowing costs or future borrowing will be too expensive or not available at all. Momentum for development within the city will slow or stop, so that future increases in tax assessments and rates will be limited to 2.5% under state law, unless the residents vote for an override. Tax increases will actually be greater as a result of the decrease in development and investment. And because tax revenue will not keep pace with inflation, future capital improvement projects will slow or be suspended. More than likely, there will be layoffs, new hires eliminated, and services reduced or eliminated. More importantly, first responders, police, and fire might not get the needed equipment and staffing to adequately maintain safety. In conclusion, the Chelsea Chamber of Commerce firmly believes that there are better ways to address the parking issues. Our representatives and members are willing to come to the table to discuss solutions that will benefit the entire city. Thank you. Signed, Joseph M. Vanard, Vice President.
Thank you. Mr. Ambrosino.
Thank you, Madam President, Tom Ambrosino, City Manager. So, I am speaking in opposition. My administration is opposed to this. I'm not going to be overly critical of the proposal, because I clearly understand the sentiment that lies behind it. People complain often about parking. But I think this solution is just too draconian for two reasons. Well, because it will inhibit two huge priorities of mine, I think of the city, and for some councilors. One you've already heard of, which is affordable housing, which we all know is desperately needed in the city, and I think all of us share the desire to create. You just can't build and finance affordable housing with 1.5 spaces per unit. It's just not feasible. Any affordable housing development that gets done has to have parking at less than that, and our requirement's almost across the border, 1.5, and you just can't meet that. And a 10% reduction won't be sufficient. So, the reality would be, this would really preclude virtually any affordable housing development that we want to do. The second thing, which may be more of a priority for me, is just revitalizing that downtown, particularly that stretch, the most difficult one, between Fifth and Fourth, which is where we really have a lot of attention. I mean, to revitalize that really does need to create residential units above single-story storefronts, one of which is the building we now own, the Salvation Army. You can't develop in that broadway without getting parking relief. You just, there's not space to develop the parking to meet the 1.5 parking requirement that exists in our zoning, even though I think that zoning is much too stringent. And so, if we are going to develop in that corridor, we have to get zoning relief, parking relief, to make it happen. So, this kind of provision would inhibit the kind of development that I think is essential if we want to revitalize that downtown, and in particular, that critical block between Fifth and Fourth. So, for those two reasons, I oppose this. I understand the concern, but perhaps there's a different approach. This is a little, this is too draconian.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anyone else for public hearing? Going once, going twice, moving on?
Public speaking.
Public speaking. Anyone else that would like to speak about anything not related to the public hearing? Oh, I'm sorry, before, so we're going to, you can go up to the podium. I'm sorry, Barbara, go ahead. But we're going to continue the public hearing until June 25th. There will be a planning, hearing tomorrow at the Planning Board meeting at 6:00 p.m., as well as a subcommittee meeting here on Wednesday in our conference room at 6:00 p.m. All are welcome to attend. Thank you. Name and address for the record.
Barbara Richard, 7 Hooper Street, Chelsea Mouse, of course. I just want to let all of you councilmen know, Ann Thomasino, I just had spoken to him, that I managed to get ahold of Rosalie, the state rep, and she cleaned up that area on the corner of River Beach Parkway, by Russo's Hocks, where the homeless people have been living, that I've been asking people to do something about. I understand they don't want help, but it still needed to get cleaned up. It's an ice ore. And it, like I said, I called Rosalie a week ago. She said, give her two weeks. It was done before the week. It's not the best, but you know what? It's like almost 100%. So, if I could pick up a phone and call Rosalie... So if I could pick up a phone and call Rosalie, why couldn't other people? It's like, I'm only one person, and look what I did. Now, if we can only get rid of those homeless people, so they're not panhandling on that intersection. And every time I see one, I call River, because technically, that's River's State Police Barracks jurisdiction. And I called them, and I said, can you please come and do something about these panhandlers? Oh, well, we're busy right now. What, riding around, looking at the beach, watching the seagulls? I make them come down. And, um, there was one other thing. I guess that's it for now, but I just wanted to let yous know that I got that area cleaned up. Because as, as I have been communicating with Dee and with Tom, we've been working with that, and Tom has been trying to get people there to help them, but they don't want the help because they're making moron money panhandling at that intersection. So, just to let yous know, that I did get it cleaned up.
Thank you, Ms. Richard. Anyone else for public speaking? Going once, going twice, moving on. Approval of minutes. Councilor Pelletonda? Accepting file under suspension. Seeing no objections?
Communications from the City Manager. First communication, independent audits. Attached, you'll find copies of the following audit documents prepared by the city's independent auditor, Clifton Larson Allen, LLP. The documents are the comprehensive annual financial report for FY ended in June 30th, 2017. The GAO and OMB reports.
I'm sorry, Councilor Lopez, who just asked me to.
Next communication, a request for approval for ninety-nine-year lease for Silverline Greenway. You also have the packet. As you may be aware, as part of the Silverline Project, the comment vote.
Chair recognizes Councilor Avellaneda.
I make a motion to accept under suspension and waive the reading. There'll be an order.
Under new business?
Accept and file, we'll have something coming up on the new business. Uh, we have a notice of waiver intent pursuant to the Administrative Code, Section 112.02. I am writing to notify you that it is my intention to appoint Ms. Donna Rowe, 27 Stone Street, Saguas, Massachusetts, to the position of accounts payable payroll specialist, and to grant her a waiver for the residency requirement set forth in Administrative Code, Part IV, Section 112.01. A copy of her resume is attached. Please be advised that the city did offer this position to two Chelsea residents before making this selection. Both Chelsea residents declined.
Chair recognizes Councilor Lopez.
Move to a separate file communication under suspension.
Seeing no objections?
Grant-funded positions. Dear Councilors pursuant to recent council audit, I have attached for your review a breakdown of all current grant-funded positions in the city budget. The spreadsheet identifies the portion of salary funded by grant, as well as the grant expiration date.
Chair recognizes Councilor Pelletonda.
Accept and file under suspension.
Seeing no objections?
Next communication, empty lot at Bellingham and Willow Streets. Dear Council, I'm writing to respond to the council audit concerning the vacant lot at the intersection of Bellingham and Willow Streets. As some of you know, that lot was the site of a former residential property that was destroyed by fire on December 24, 2010. At present, the foundation still exists, but there has been no construction activity since the fire. In July of 2014, subsequent to the fire, ISD denied an application to construct a four-family dwelling due to dimensional deficiencies. The owner never sought zoning relief from the Zoning Board of Appeals. For vacant lands such as this, the city has limited ability to create changes. As long as the vacant land is not unkept or overgrown with vegetation, there are no code violations, and the city has no legal authority to force a property owner to develop vacant land. I concede that vacant lots such as this can be ice sores, especially ones with remnant foundations. However, unless the city council is interested in acquiring the property by eminent domain for some public purpose, such as the development of affordable housing, there's very little the city can do to expedite development of this property.
Chair recognizes Councilor Pelletonda. Accept and file a communication under suspension.
Next communication from the City Manager, notice of waiver intent pursuant to the Administrative Code, Section 112.02. I'm writing to notify you.
Chair recognizes Councilor Recupero.
Waive the reading, accept and file a communication under suspension.
Salary schedule, that you have, a request I have attached for your review, the list of all employees with salaries in connection with the FY 19 budget.
Chair recognizes Councilor Recupero. Yep. Accept and file.
Transfer request for remaining Sherwood Street work. Dear Councilors, I'm writing to request that the City Council approve a financial transfer to a lot of DPW.
Chair recognizes Councilor Bishop.
Waive the reading, Madam President.
Waive the reading.
Yeah, and I move to lay this on the table pending an order.
There's something coming up on the new business.
Accept and file.
Are we tabling it, or accepting and filing it?
Right. Laid on the table pending an order.
There is an order. There is an order, so are we accepting the communication?
So just accept the communication.
Oh, it's passed at the last meeting? No. Yeah, I, I signed the order tonight, it's gonna come up on the new business.
Correct.
So I move to accept and file a communication?
Yes, okay. Okay, got it.
And on, may I speak on it?
Yes, you may, Mr. Bishop.
Then I won't have to speak again when it comes up, uh, under new business. I might just briefly speak. This is a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar transfer of existing funds that, uh, was left over from the Clock Avenue, Crescent Avenue, Tudor Street, Lawrence Street Utility Project, and it's being transferred to cover the cost of finishing the Sherwood Street project. This is not an appropriation of new money, it's a transfer of funds, and I move to lay it on the table.
Thank you.
Okay, we have the trash barrel purchase. Dear Councilors, I'm writing to request that City Council consider the acquisition of new heavy-duty trash barrels.
This is a request from the City Manager to appropriate, and I move to lay it on the table pending an order.
There is an order, so do you want to accept and file the communication? Okay.
I'm sorry, you're right. This is four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, and six hundred dollars for the purchase of trash barrels for the city of Chelsea. I'm sure all of the district councilors are aware of the rodent problem that we have throughout the city. I was riding down, uh, Cook Avenue the other night, and a big rat came running right across the street in front of my car. It's like, uh, they were saying, hey, we're still here. Believe me, the residents are telling me they are still here. And, um... And hopefully, this will, in some small way, help that problem, uh, by putting all of the trash in containers that are rodent-proof. And, uh, that's why I favor this. The city of Everett, I happen to live on the Everett Line, has been doing this for a number of years, I would say eight or ten years. And it seems to be, every trash day, they roll out their barrels, they're all the same size, nothing else but the barrels, because they're big enough to hold what they're putting out, and the trash truck comes along and dumps them. There's no litter on the street, there's no nothing. So I, I think this is a good investment, and it's, uh, coming from free cash, and, uh, I moved, accept and file.
Okay. Well, there's a pending order, so we can open it up for discussion when it comes up.
Okay. The next communication, extension of the Downtown Urban Initiative, Chelsea Prosperes.
Chair recognizes Councilor Lopez.
Waive the rest of the reading, accept and file communication under suspension. Something coming up on the, the new business.
On the new business. The next communication from the City Manager is the transfer request for citywide water, sewer, drainage master plan.
Communication, we had a finance committee meeting this evening, and we discussed this subject. This is a total of eight hundred and sixty-six thousand and five hundred dollars, um, which is being transferred from existing funds, uh, for the purpose of doing a master plan of the water sewer system. Um, the city engineer, the engineer that the city has working for us says we need this desperately. They don't have a, an existing plan showing what the water and sewer lines are, uh, to any great detail. The City Manager has stated that, um, we have no detail on what the water system is, very difficult to figure out, and that this will go a long way to, um, mapping out the plans for future, future work in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
Do we have a transfer request for Chapter 90 program and Veterans Field?
Councilor Bishop?
Again, we, um, had a brief meeting this evening on this, and, um, this is taking money from existing funds and transferring it, uh, for the use of, um, to repair the field down at the Chelsea High School, and to also, um, Veterans Fe- for the Veterans Field at the high school, and, um, also to do work, uh, on the DPW's street and sewers, street and sidewalks. So I move to accept and file.
Thank you.
Let me see, we have the final communication, CIP Plan Analysis. Dear Councilors, at the City Council's request, the city has completed a financial analysis of outstanding capital projects approved in the past decade since FY 11.
Councilor Bishop?
Waive the reading, this is a communication from the City Manager in response to a request during the budget hearings, uh, that he give us an accounting of, uh, what other capital improvement years have funds in them. And they're all detailed here, I did look it over quickly, and I'm, I can see that there are possibly, um, some years that these could be closed out, and I'm hoping that the City Manager and the auditor will be working on closing out these funds that are no longer needed. So I move to accept and file.
Got it. Thank you, Councilor.
Communications and petitions to the Council. We have a copy of a communication received from the City Parking Clerk, Jeanette Centron White, regarding the actions that were approved at the May 8th, 2018 Traffic and Parking Commission Meeting.
Accept and file a communication under suspension, there's no objection.
Seeing none, so moved? Unfinished business?
Unfinished business. We have the resolution introduced by all members of the City Council regarding the CIP, and the CIP is in conference.
Councilor Brown?
I'd like to take the C, um, CIP loan from the 2019 to 2003 Capital Improvement Program out of conference, um, and bring to the table tonight under suspension.
Okay.
Also like, just barely speak on, um, just wanna speak on the resolution, uh, the motion. Hope that we can take this out, we have to take it out.
What's the motion with the, um, with the order and with the resolution?
Under suspension, with, under suspension.
Roll, roll call.
Well, roll call, vote on both of the matters.
Right. But you're removing them from suspension.
You have the floor, Councilor.
Thank you. So, um, we actually got the Capital Improvement Program back in February, I believe, the end of February, from the manager, and we've all, we've had a few meetings on it, we've all discussed it. It's something that we have to prove by the first of June. Um, I think we should take this out tonight. I know it's an aggressive, um, piece of document, I know the City Manager's been working very hard, uh, kinda, um, ruffle some feathers of the City Council, but, um, most of all this in the capital improvement for the following year, nineteen, 2019 to 2023, will enhance the city of Chelsea. So, um, I just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Manager, for your dedication, for the work, and presenting this, um, document with us for the next five years, and I'll be supporting it when it comes out. Thank you.
Anybody else wanna speak on the CIP, before we have our roll call vote? All right, so we will vote on the CIP first?
Yes. Councilor Vido.
Yes.
Councilor Lopez.
Yes.
Council Rodriguez. Councilor Brown.
Yes.
Councilor Bishop. Council Tihada, absent. Council Avellaneda. Council Robinson. Council Pelletonda. Council Garcia, absent. Council Ray Coopero. Nine in favor and non-approved, two absent. Motion carries by two-thirds, vote necessary. You have now the resolution with regards to the Capital Improvement Program. And there's a roll call by Councilor Brown to adopt by roll call. Councilor Vido.
Yes.
Council Lopez.
Yes.
Council Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilor Brown.
Yes.
Councilor Bishop. Council Tihada, absent. Council Avellaneda. Council Robinson. Council Pelletonda. Council Garcia, absent. Council Ray Coopero. Nine in favor and non-approved, two absent, motion adopted. Anything else on the unfinished business?
Council Recupero?
Yes, I would like to run back the residency requirement and vote on it for the police and fire on the unfinished business.
So you moved to take the residency require, the residency requirement for public safety officials out of conference and, out of suspension? And you wanna vote on it? Would you like to speak on it?
Yes, I'd like to speak on it, too.
You have the floor.
We've been going around this for a long time. I believe it's a good thing, and it's a minimal thing, only five years. I believe by them living here, they will know their neighborhoods better and understand their people more. And I think it's a good thing, and it only affects the new hiries, not the old hiries. So I, my honest opinion is it's a good thing, and I hope we vote for it. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right? Roll call. Can you just clarify, are we voting yes?
A yes would be to approve.
Okay.
Roll call requested by Council Jivani. Council Vido.
Yes.
Council Lopez.
Yes.
Council Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilor Brown.
No.
Councilor Bishop.
Yes.
Council Tihada, absent. Council Avellaneda. Council Robinson. Council Pelletonda. Council Garcia, absent. Council Ray Coopero. One, two, three, four, five, six in favor, three opposed, two absent, motion adopted. That's it on the unfinished business, we have second readings. First order under second readings.
Second readings.
Order introduced by Council Bishop. Audit that the Chelsea City Council authorized appropriation of a hundred thousand dollars from fund balance reserved for overlay surplus account to the Assessors Department Appraisal Services account to fund FY 20 revaluation.
Council Bishop. Move to roll call. Any discussion on it, Mr. Bishop? No?
Yes would be to adopt. Councilor Vido.
Yes.
Council Lopez. Council Rodriguez. Councilor Brown.
Yes.
Councilor Bishop.
Yes.
Council Tihada, absent. Council Avellaneda. Council Robinson. Council Pelletonda. Council Garcia, absent. Council Ray Coopero. Nine in favor and non-approved, two absent, motion adopted. The second item under, appointments to boards and commissions. We have a request for a waiver also in there, so I would suggest a vote on the waiver, and then a vote, a vote on all the...
Can I get a motion?
We have a request for a waiver in here also.
Council Robinson moves to a roll call vote, including the waiver.
Including the waiver, okay.
Well, do you wanna take the...
Do you wanna do two separate votes?
Well, I could, I mean, for me, I can just take it all in one vote.
Yeah, let's do it all in one vote, unless somebody opposes. Residency waiver for one of the board appointments.
Well, board and commu- communities, I'd like to have them separate.
You want her separate?
Okay.
Who's, who are we giving the waiver to?
Michael Mason, who actually works in the Chelsea School of Finance, who'd be going over to be on the advisory board for community schools. He's been with the school system for a while.
So what's your motion, Mr. Bishop? Do you wish to, to do them all separately? Or do you just want to do the residency waiver separately?
Let's do the residency waiver.
Okay.
Okay. So this will be for all appointments first.
Okay.
With excluding the waiver.
I'm sorry? Okay, absolutely.
We're not voting, excluding the waiver.
So these, this is for the appointment excluding the waiver?
This is to affirm all appointments excluding the waiver. And then we'll have a separate one for the waiver.
Should we do the waiver first? Because if they get appointed...
If we want to. Whatever you want. Wanna do the waiver?
I, I'm thinking we probably should do the waiver first, in case, um, the person gets appointed, and then the waiver doesn't go through. So let's, we're voting on the waiver first.
Okay, uh, requested, okay, Robert Bishop, uh, moved roll call on the waiver.
Yep.
On granting the waiver.
Yep.
So if you vote yes, you're... So if you vote yes, you're granting the waiver. If you vote no, you're not granting the waiver. Okay? Councilor Vido.
Yes.
Council Lopez.
Yes.
Council Rodriguez. Council Brown, absent. Councilor Bishop. Council Tihada, absent. Council Avizaneda. Council Robinson. Council Pearl Tonda. Council Garcia, absent. Council Ray Coopero. Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Eight in favor and none opposed, three absent. The waiver is granted. And now you have a roll call to affirm the appointments.
Okay.
By Council Robinson. Councilor Vido.
Yes.
Council Lopez. Council Rodriguez. Councilor Brown. Councilor Bishop. Council Tihada, absent. Council Avizaneda. Council Robinson. Council Pearl Tonda. Council Garcia, absent. Council Ray Coopero. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Eight in favor and none opposed, three absent. The motion to affirm all the appointments have been granted.
New business.
Okay, we're now going on to new business. Order introduced by Council Bishop. Audit that the Chelsea City Council authorized appropriation of funds in the amount of forty-five thousand from free cash to the FY twenty eighteen L O F S contract services expense account for our senior transportation pilot.
Move to a second reading.
Second reading.
Order introduced by Council Bishop. Audit that the Chelsea City Council authorized appropriation of funds in the amount of twenty thousand dollars from free cash to the FY twenty eighteen DPW structures and grounds building maintenance expense account.
Councilor Bishop?
Second reading.
Second reading.
Order, all following money orders are introduced by Council Bishop. Audit that the Chelsea City Council authorized appropriation of funds in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars from free cash to the FY twenty eighteen DPW structures and grounds capital building improvement expense account for our CPD server room HVAC installation.
Mr. Bishop? Second reading.
Audit that the Chelsea City Council authorized appropriation of funds in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars from free cash to the FY twenty eighteen DPW structures and grounds building maintenance expense account for HVAC contract services.
Councilor Bishop?
Second reading.
Move to a second reading.
Audit that the Chelsea City Council authorized appropriation of funds of the amount of forty thousand dollars from free cash to the FY twenty eighteen DPW structures and grounds repair and maintenance supplies expense account for miscellaneous building repairs at CPD, Senior Center and City Hall.
Council Bishop? Move it to a second reading.
Order introduced by Council Bishop. Audit that the Chelsea City Council authorized appropriation of funds in the amount of fifty thousand dollars from Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings to the FY twenty eighteen Water Enterprise Capital Expense Infrastructure Account for emergency water line.
Councilor Bishop?
Second reading.
Move to a second reading.
Audit that the Chelsea City Council authorized appropriation of funds in the amount of thirty thousand dollars from free cash to the FY twenty eighteen DPW streets and sidewalks signature expense account for banner program.
Councilor Bishop?
Second reading.
Move to a second reading.
Orders cosponsored by Council Vido and Council Avizaneda. Be it hereby ordered by the City Council of the City of Chelsea as follows that the city manager hereby authorized to execute a lease with the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority for the use of the Greenway next to the New Silver Line in Chelsea. Be it further ordered that the Chelsea City Manager may reasonably vary the form or substance of the proposed lease as necessary in order to facilitate reaching a final agreement to be executed by all parties.
Councilor Avizaneda?
I move that this be adopted on a roll call vote. And if I may speak on it?
You have the floor, councilor.
Thank you. For those at home who are wondering what this may be about, for a long time now, the city has been working on creating a bike path, dedicated bike path and pedestrian path that was on the old CSX railroad line that was currently where the Silver Line is. Even before the Silver Line was, project was coming to Chelsea, this project was in the works and the city had begun to do some land takings along this route. Only now that the Silver Line is coming, that there is now not only the path for the buses, but alongside it, from Chestnut Street all the way to Eastern Avenue, a soon-to-be bike path. Now, again, these sort of things are not done by accident, but there's a goal here in mind that one day, much like we see in other communities, you will see a bike path that could possibly cross Eastern Avenue and then head over onto the waterfront side. And maybe one day we'll have a full access harbor walk. That is the long-term goal here. But you, this, this, this ninety-nine-year lease that we're entering with the MBTA is part of that long vision goal. So good things are to come and I'm happy to support this. Thank you.
Okay, roll call vote.
Councilor Vido.
Yes.
Council Lopez. Council Rodriguez. Council Brown.
Yes.
Council Bishop. Council Tihada, absent. Council Avizaneda. Council Robinson. Council Pearl Tonda. Council Garcia, absent. Council Ray Coopero. Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent. Motion adopted.
I just want to ask all the councilors to make sure that you use the microphones because the people on the other side cannot hear us.
Order introduced by Council Bishop. An order transferring proceeds of borrowing that are no longer needed to complete the project for which they were originally borrowed to pay cost of an alternative capital project as authorized by Chapter forty-four, section twenty of the general laws. Order that in accordance with Chapter forty-four, section twenty of the general laws, a sum of one hundred forty-seven thousand, two hundred and four dollars, forty-five cents, representing the unexpected portion of the one million nine hundred fourteen thousand, seven hundred ninety-four dollars borrowed under the fiscal year twenty seventeen CIP for sewer infrastructure improvements to the Clark Utility Project Sewer Bond, but which is no longer needed to complete that project, is hereby transferred in the amount of one hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and four dollars and forty-five cents for sewer improvements to the FY sixteen Charlotte Street Sewer Account.
Councilor Bishop? Move to a second reading.
Order that the Chelsea City Council authorized appropriation of four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars from free cash to the FY twenty eighteen DPW Solid Waste Division Supplies Account Series for our trash containers.
Councilor Bishop?
Move it to a second reading.
Second reading.
Order that the Chelsea City Council authorized appropriation of four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars from free cash to the FY twenty eighteen Planning and Development Account.
Councilor Bishop?
Move to a second reading.
Subcommittee? He wants to send it to a subcommittee on conference.
What is this one? Four hundred, the five hundred thirty-five thousand?
Four hundred and sixty-eight thousand?
For free cash to planning and development.
The planning and development about?
Yep.
I could, it can still go to a second reading and conference, can't it?
Yes.
He said go into, he says go into a second reading pending a subcommittee on conference.
We have an order that in accordance with Chapter forty-four, section twenty of the general laws, a sum of five hundred thirty-five thousand borrowed under the FY twenty eighteen CIP Plan for Sewer Infrastructure Improvements Large Sewer and Drain Cleaning Project, but which has not been undertaken and no liability remains outstanding and unpaid, is hereby abandoned, discontinued and funds transferred in the amount of five hundred thirty-five thousand for sewer infrastructure improvements to the FY eighteen Citywide Utility Master Plan Account Series Sewer Enterprise Fund.
Councilor Bishop?
Move it to a second reading.
Second reading.
We have an order that in accordance with Chapter forty-four, section twenty of the general laws, a sum of three hundred and thirty-one thousand, fifty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents, representing the unexpected portion of the three hundred and eighty thousand dollars borrowed under the FY twenty eighteen CIP for our sewer infrastructure improvements, Stockton Sewer Replacement Project Sewer Bond Account, and a balance remains after the completion of the project for which the loan was authorized, which is no longer needed to complete that project, is hereby transferred in the amount of three hundred and thirty-one thousand, fifty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents for sewer improvements to the FY eighteen Citywide Utility Master Plan Account Series Sewer Enterprise.
Councilor Bishop?
Move it to a second reading.
Move to a second reading.
Order that in accordance with Chapter forty-four, section twenty of the general laws, a sum of one hundred thirty-six thousand borrowed under the FY twenty seventeen CIP for Garfield Air Roadway Improvement Project, but which has not been undertaken and no liability remains outstanding and unpaid, is hereby abandoned, discontinued and funds transferred in the amount of one hundred thirty-six thousand for road improvements DPW Streets and Sidewalks Account.
Council Bishop?
Second reading.
Order that in accordance with Chapter forty-four, section twenty of the general laws, a sum of one hundred eighty-six thousand dollars borrowed under the FY twenty seventeen CIP for CIP Plan for our Suffolk Street Roadway Improvement Project, but which has not been undertaken and no liability remains outstanding and unpaid, is hereby abandoned, discontinued and funds transferred in the amount of one hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars for road improvements DPW Streets and Sidewalks Account.
Second reading.
Order that in accordance with Chapter forty-four, section twenty of the general laws, a sum of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars borrowed under the FY twenty sixteen CIP Plan CHS Jim Lighting Project Building Improvements, but which has not been undertaken and no liability remains outstanding and unpaid, is hereby abandoned, discontinued and funds transferred in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for FY eighteen Veterans Field Project Account.
Councilor Bishop?
Move it to a second reading.
Second reading.
Order that in accordance with the Chapter forty-four, section twenty of the general laws, a sum of eighty-one thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars and three cents, representing the unexpected portion of the one hundred fifty thousand dollars borrowed under the FY twenty sixteen Capital Improvement Plan for our CPS Early Learning Center School Boiler Replacement Project, and a balance remains after the completion of the project for which the loan was authorized, which is no longer needed to complete that project, is hereby transferred in the amount of eighty-one thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars and three cents for FY eighteen Veterans Field Project Account.
Councilor Bishop?
Move it to a second reading.
Second reading, that's surprising.
Dan, I'm not speaking on that.
Order that the, in accordance with Chapter forty-four, section twenty of the general laws, a sum of twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars, representing the unexpected portion of the two hundred thousand dollars borrowed under the FY twenty seventeen CIP Plan for CPS Early Learning Center School Security Desk Project Account, and a balance remains after the completion of the project for which the loan was authorized, which is no longer needed to complete that project, is hereby transferred in the amount of twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars for FY eighteen Veterans Field Project.
Councilor Bishop?
Move it to a second reading.
Move it to a second reading.
Order introduced by Council Ray Coopero. Order that the city manager give the council a water rate that the city of Chelsea pays to the MWR and provide a list of comparison rates of other cities.
Chair recognizes Council Ray Coopero. Seeing none, you have the floor, councilor.
This is for us to see how feasible it is for this, for this council to give every homeowner that's occupied in their house a break on their water. And by comparing and see how much they charge and how much we charge and how much other cities charge, we can see if it's a good thing to do or if it's not a good thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coopero.
Next order introduced by Council Ray Coopero. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Chelsea as follows that the city of Chelsea's Code of Ordinance should be amended by adding the following ordinance, the Chelsea Code of Ordinance, Chapter forty-four, Article eleven, is hereby added as follows, amend section fourteen dash four twenty-two exemptions, A, one, in its entirety to read as follows. A, the provision of this article shall not apply to residential yacht sales provided that one, only five yacht sales shall occur per year on a single parcel of land, but not for consecutive weeks.
Councilor Coopero?
I'd like to adopt that the suspension, if there's no objection.
Seeing none, councilor, would you like to speak on it?
Yes. This is a good thing. It's not something we're just extending the time for them to go out and have a yacht sale. It's only going to be twice in the summer, twice in the fall and one in the spring. It's, it's not a whole bunch. Other cities allow them to do it as many times. We're still going to charge for them to do it anyways. And maybe with this, they'll regulate the amount of time they can do it and they get charged for it regardless. I think it's a good thing so people can clean out their houses and try to get rid of some of this stuff.
Counselor, because it's a change to an ordinance, can I suggest that we do a roll call vote?
Yes.
Okay. Does it need two readings? No, it's not financial.
You want to move it to the, you objected to the first reading.
You objected to the first reading, you want to send it to a second reading?
Okay. He objected to the first reading.
He objected to the first reading.
Our next order introduced by Council Coopero. Audit that the Traffic and Parking Commission looking into limiting, look into limiting the amount of residential parking stickers sold to non-residents.
Councilor Coopero?
I'd like to adopt on the suspension, if there's no objection, I speak on it.
You have the floor.
This is, within the years as they implemented this program, has cost parking spots to our city. Last year there was ninety-eight, this year there's a hundred and ninety-eight. So for each of these things that they do, takes away a parking spot from the residents. So I'm not against giving a business, maybe one, but the way it's structured now is that there's an unlimited amount. So as long as they can pay up, they can get it up and they can get all the ones they want. So it's a good thing to at least limit the amount of parking permits you can give to the, to the people because you're only taking it away from the residents. If it increased twice as much within one year, just imagine what it will increase within three years. They'll take it over and we'll have to pay them to park. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Coopero. Councilor Brown?
Thank you, Madam. I'd just like a little clarification. I'm not sure. He's talking about limiting the amount of residential parking tickets is sold to non-residents or look into the.
Non-residents.
But that's not what the order said. It says look into it, so I'm not sure if we're just going to act for a study on it or are we just going to limit it? Maybe we can get a clarification.
So you're looking, you want the Traffic Parking and Commission to limit the amount of residential stickers that they're giving to non-residents?
Yes, sold.
It says sold.
The one that's sold, the non-residents.
So is that what it is? Look into.
Are we, are we, are you clear or?
Next.
Can you read the order back?
Is that clear?
Yeah.
Order that the Traffic and Parking Commission look into limiting, limiting the amount of residential parking stickers sold to non-residents.
Is it look into or is it just limiting?
Just look into.
Do you want to limit it? Do you want them to have a two, a minimum or a number? Or do you want them to look into it? If so, we should send it to a, a conference to figure out what exactly.
Okay, let's give the council an opportunity to explain. Do you want to explain, Councilor Coopero, what is it that you're looking for?
I'm looking for them to look into amount to give, I'm looking into them to restrict the amounts of parking permits they can give non-residents by being sold. Instead of, they have an unlimited amount now. Anybody can go up to City Hall, they can get as many as they want, as long as they pay the three hundred or six hundred dollar fee. So I, I'm looking to limit the amount. If you own a business and you want to get one, fine, but you know, limit.
Okay. Do you have a question, councilor?
We're looking to commercial vehicles or residential cars?
It says residential parking stickers sold to non-residents, so I'm assuming it's residential.
Everybody, does non-resident, everyone does non-resident, right?
Well, can we clear the order to make sure, I mean, if we're going to set, I don't have a problem with it, council, I just want it to be clear. I don't have a problem with it at all. We've all have concerns with this, but I think it should be a little clearer. So if we could take a two-minute break and we can figure out.
I don't, I don't think, I think this is pretty, how about we send it to a subcommittee and then we, we.
I don't think we have to. I think if he wants to.
I don't think this really requires a recess.
We're not doing anything. It's up to them.
It's a two-minute reset.
How about we send it, oh, you know what? It's going to Traffic Parking and Commission. Why don't we just let them handle it?
Okay.
Okay, moving on.
Move on. Next order introduced by Councilor Vido. Order that the subcommittee on conference should be held with the city manager to address FY '19 budget questions or concerns.
Chair recognizes Councilor Rodriguez.
Objection?
Seeing none, so moved.
Last order introduced by Councilor Vido. Order that the Traffic and Parking Commission look into getting rid of the cement pillars that are in front of the handicap ramp near Planning and Development in order to create additional handicap parking.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Anything on suspension? If no objection.
Seeing none, so moved. Public announcements. I'm so proud we got through that very hefty agenda. Any public announcements, Councilor? Councilor Abadanaeda?
Thank you. I know that tomorrow night, we have a number of meetings, including the city council will be having a subcommittee on marijuana proposal in front on Eastern Ave, I believe. But at the same time, we will be having, the licensing board will be having their meeting, and I plan on being, attending that one because one of the items on the agenda will be a possible, a meeting that has been, an item, rather, agenda item has been rescheduled, and that, and that agenda item is the possibility of banning the sale of Nips in the city of Chelsea. So it's in, a subject matter that is important, I think, to those in the downtown area. We've heard issues about the, 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 the way that the Nips are thrown away in the downtown area, or that the liquor stores are acting as de facto bars instead of true retail sales that they're supposed to be. So I will be attending that, and I wanted to make sure that the public was aware of it. And if they're interested on this subject matter, that the licensing board will be meeting tomorrow night at 6:00 PM and the lower level of the public library.
Thank you. Councilor Recupero? Let's hold on. Does anybody else have any announcements? Councilor Ennio Lopez?
On behalf of the Watermelon community, we want to say thank you to the city of Chelsea and Mr. Ambrosino, the chief of D B W Department, allowing us to have, to have the council from Watermelon yesterday, Saturday and Sunday, and there was about probably 500 people who were, served passports, and they were very happy, and I'm happy too. Thank you very much, Mr. Ambrosino.
Any other announcements before, okay, I have one. Our Memorial, annual Memorial Day Parade is on Monday, May 28. The parade will start at 7:18 Broadway at 8:15 AM, and it will end here at City Hall. Please come and support our, our community and our veterans. And that's on Memorial Day, May 28. Moment of silence?
Night in Texas.
In the school shooting? For Freddie Milwaukee?
Yeah, for Mr. Freddie Milwaukee, longtime Chelsea resident, Chelsea high athlete who passed.
Any other?
And also for Richie Feinberg, who is a longtime Chelsea resident.
For Patricia Pierce from Admirals Hill, and I believe, is it Judy that passed away, Leo, over here? Julie, Judy Butler, who passed away last week. A lot of us know her. She used to work here on Washington Ave at the dentist place for a number of years, and I saw her daughter last week. She passed away last week.
Killed from Stonem High School?
Yep.
We can all remember all of them in our prayers.
Of the Texas community for the shooting last week. It was another sad incident of gun violence, and again, it happens in schools. Well, kids know it's going to happen, so we pray that it doesn't happen here, but want to send out prayers.
Seeing no further business before us.